So, welcome to the September 14th regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. We apologize for the delay in getting started, but let's go ahead and get the Pledge of Allegiance taken here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are going to start with staff announcements. Gabriel, anything before we bring Gina up?
No, Madam Chair, it's just some of the communication I've passed on earlier this morning for your review. Commissioner Parker is not going to be here this morning. He's ill. He called yesterday. And then you have the email from Commissioner Singh. Outside of that, Gina, you're up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm so excited to give you this news.
Me too.
The long-awaited release of the draft update to the county zoning code is up online and out for public review. Provided all of you with a copy in your colored binders there, just to kind of let you know how this is all going to run down. We've broken the code out into three separate sections. Right now, what you have before you is zone districts and use classifications. The next section we'll be reviewing will be the countywide regulations. And then the final section we will be reviewing will be the administrative processes. So, we're going to try to give you sufficient time between, you know, between each review to be able to update yourself and get familiar with the new section. We've got study sessions planned to begin October 11th. And the pace basically will be up to you guys. How quickly you want to get through this will be, you know, dependent on how many times you want to meet. I've blocked out Wednesdays, so, you know, we've got all of our Wednesdays through October into November if you so need. We can also roll into the end of our Planning Commission agendas on Thursday. So, it'll be up to you, whatever schedule you guys want to hold, but we're ready to go. So, once you get into the document, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, whether it's a phone, email, or you want to drop by my office. I'm here all the time. We recently, just last week, we, as a county, decided to actually run concurrently with the zoning code update, the zoning map. And what that means is there will be approximately 5,000 parcels in the county that will be affected. Their zoning will be affected by the update. So, we're eliminating, we're proposed to eliminate a couple of base zones, and we're eliminating a multitude of overlay zones. So, with that, we're currently trying to get the list of parcels together. We'll give ample notification to all those property owners. So, we're trying to get all that together so we can run it through at the same time. Again, if you guys have any questions, just feel free to give me a call. Also, in your binders, I've provided you with flyers that are now being circulated through the public. These flyers are basically informational, tells people where to go to get information. Another one answers some frequently asked questions about what is a zoning code and why does it need to be updated? So, we've done a massive email blast. We've posted this just about everywhere that we can think of. And I'm reaching out to you guys for help. Feel free to take those copies and post them around your community, hand them out to your, you know, to the folks in your districts, and just get the word out that, you know, we're doing some good things here and we're looking for the public input, so.
If I could add one thing to that, I just was thinking in terms of helping Gina know how to get an agenda up for the Planning Commission meetings, especially if we're going to be meeting on non-regular days, I would recommend we put an item to discuss that on the next agenda just so that we can maybe get a schedule, at least a draft schedule, from the Commission. For a special meeting, it would have to be posted at least 24 hours in advance. We don't need a public hearing for the study session piece, but the Brown Act would require some preparation of the agenda.
And will we have it on our, we'll have the special meeting on October 11th, the first kickoff meeting, and then we will just continue that meeting?
Yes, that's the plan.
You could do that. October 11th, is that a, okay, that is a special.
It's a Wednesday, yes.
So, you could continue it to regular, to subsequent agenda items as long as it was done at every?
Every time. So, we'll, we'll continue it to the next Wednesday and potentially as an option on our Thursday, last item of the agenda.
Right, right. Like I said, depending on how quickly you guys, you know, how eager you are to roll through this, you know, we're all in, we're here anyway. All I have to do is make arrangements for the consultant to be available on those days. She and I communicated that, and it, so far, doesn't seem to be a problem. But yeah, if you guys are game and you want to tag it on to the end of the Planning Commission agenda, then, you know, once you get through your regular items, then we can, you know, roll right into the study session.
I've looked through the binder this morning, and all looks good to me, so I won't come back.
So, Gina was getting nervous there.
I do want to thank you for all the hard work you've done on this. I mean, it's, somebody had to take up the burden, and I guess it was you.
It's a group effort, and everyone's pitching in, and, you know, we work well as a team, so.
Good.
Yeah, it's great. We're all excited, and we're looking forward to meet the consultant. Yeah, yeah, she's a, she's a great gal, easy to work with. Just a few notes, the most, probably the most glaring difference you're going to see is the structure. Don't be intimidated by it. Once you, once you learn it, it's super easy. And I've gone ahead and tagged, paper clipped the different sections for you until you kind of get used to flipping through the document. Like I said, if you need any help with it, just reach out to me, and we can go through it. It's, you know, once you get into it, you'll find it's a lot more user-friendly than the current code.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
You know, again, thank you, Gina. For my own edification, what's the best way to prepare? Should we read the whole thing, or are you going to suggest we do a section at a time and prepare that way? How would you suggest we go about preparing?
Yeah, you may want to, to do, don't skip the introduction. There's a really helpful piece in the beginning that kind of tells you what changes we've made, and so you'll need to be aware of that as you're going through the document. But I would start from, start page one and go all the way through. Once you familiarize yourself with the structure, then I would go back through it again. There's references in the tables. So, what used to be the long list of uses is now shortened up. We've created use classifications, and those use classifications are now in a nice, very user-friendly, clear table with all the different zones across the top. It's just a lot nicer and very well organized, so.
More similar to how we have the general plan with the.
Yes, yes. So, once again, if you get into it, you don't understand it, reach out to me, we can go through it. I'll be happy to walk you through.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Run away.
Very much. Thank you.
Are there any agenda changes?
None for me, Madam Chair. Any changes? None, thank you.
Then, this will, we'll open the general public comment period. If there's anybody who's here to speak on an item of interest to the Planning Commission, but not on the agenda today, this would be your opportunity to speak. And I assume you're all here for an agenda item today. Annette, is there anybody online? Okay, great. Then we'll close the public comment portion and move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the Commission or the public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion today?
Not for further discussion, but I think we have to remove item number one because I didn't, I was not in attendance, and there's.
We have that, okay.
That dance going on.
We'll take off item one. I think again. We will take a look at item two. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
I'd like to know that we approve the meeting minutes of August 10th, 1923.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody left? So, it passes 3-0-2 with two commissioners absent. So, we will get started with regular agenda item one, 2023-019, conditional use permit for Steven Vanderlich, DBA Mach 1 towing. Is Mr. Vanderlich here?
No.
Okay, so, because we are missing two commissioners today, approval of your item will require a unanimous vote of the three commissioners here. And, but we will give you the opportunity to reschedule to a date when there are at least four commissioners present. It's totally up to you. You want to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Then, we'll go ahead and turn this over to Catherine to introduce the item.
Good morning. My name's Catherine Stephanie. I'm a planner two with the Calaveras County Planning Department, and I am presenting project 2023-091, the conditional use.
Is your mic on?
I believe so.
It's hard to see from here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on. So, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to operate a tow yard at 3293 Highway 12 in Burson. They're proposing to use an approximately one acre area in the front of the parcel north of the existing office for a 24-hour towing, storage, and roadside service business. Structures on the parcel currently consist of an approximately 600 square foot office building and two conex boxes. APN 048-016-003 is a 3.02 acre parcel. Zone general commercial, C2, is designated by the general plan as having a commercial land use designation and is located within the Burson Community Plan area. A tow yard is not currently defined in the Calaveras County Code, nor is it enumerated in any zone, but Chapter 17.36, which regulates the C2 zone, allows the planning director to determine that commercial uses similar to both permitted and conditional uses enumerated in the chapter are consistent with the chapter. Conditional uses in the C2 zone include contract equipment yards, truck terminals, and airports, and the planning director has determined that a tow yard is similar to these conditional uses and is therefore permitted in the C2 zone with the approval of a CUP, the purpose of which is to provide the general public with the opportunity to review a proposed land use that's generally consistent with the purpose of a base zoning district but has the potential to cause conflicts with neighboring land uses and zoning. The subject parcel is surrounded by a variety of zones. To the north across Highway 12 is a public service parcel owned by the Foothill Fire Protection District, and beyond that are rural residential parcels with single-family residences. To the south is an approximately 40-acre split zone, general agriculture, single-family residential parcel with a single-family residence. And to the east is the Burson Church located on a split zone multifamily residential local commercial parcel and two single-family residences in the R3 zone are also to the east. To the west are general commercial parcels with commercial and industrial uses, including a mini storage facility, a junkyard, and a garden supply center. The project as proposed complies with the C2 development and performance standards, and no site improvements have been required. The applicant has shown four parking spaces on their site plan. However, Chapter 17.70, which regulates parking, only requires that parking requirements be met at the time of new construction, rezoning, or conversion of a single-family residence to multiple family, commercial, or industrial uses. None of those apply, and therefore, staff is not required additional parking or that parking be met. Code also requires an area equal to 5% of the area devoted to structures and parking be planted with new landscaping. However, there is no construction beyond the installation of a six-foot-tall slatted fence, and no parking is required. Therefore, we're not asking for any landscaping to be installed. When C2 parcels are developed after R1 parcels, the adjoining property boundary is required to be fenced, but a screen fenced already has been installed between the subject parcel and the split A1/R1 parcel to the south. Only a six-foot fence is proposed. No new trees will be planted, and none of the adjoining parcels have records of solar panels, so there's no issue with the proposed project potentially blocking solar energy collection devices on adjoining parcels. The proposed use will not produce consistent noise that will disturb sensitive receptors such as single-family residences or the church in the area. The application states that the project will only produce light noise, not much louder than the idle of a truck, and the permit has also been conditioned to limit, to limit uses allowed and exclude uses such as dismantling, which would produce more noise. Our operations will also be subject to the standards of the county general plan and county code as well. Additionally, no exterior lighting or solid waste and recycling areas have been proposed as part of the application, and therefore, these requirements don't need to be met. The proposed tow yard is compatible with the commercial land use designation, which is intended for commercial or office uses such as retail stores, large equipment sales, and storage and warehousing. As stated before, the parcel is located in the Burson Community area. However, Burson has no adopted community goals or policies to comply with. As proposed, the project conforms to the general plan and is consistent with general plan policy, policies O5, excuse me, OU 5.4, which encourages the attraction of new compatible businesses and industry to the county, and OU 5.9, which encourages the renovation and reuse of underutilized and vacant parcels, industrial sites, buildings and, buildings, and retail centers. The application was circulated to various county departments and local public agencies for 30 days, and during the review period, responses were received from the Calaveras County Environmental Management Agency, the Public Works Department, the Building Department, the Calaveras Consolidated Fire District, and the California Department of Transportation or Caltrans. Public Works and the Environmental Management Agency had no comment on the project, and both building and the Calaveras Consolidated Fire District required inspections of the property. Caltrans stated that their conditions are only applicable if the driveway is to be modified. However, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the driveway as part of this project. And the notice of public hearing was routed to property owners within 300 feet, and no comments were received. Pursuant to Section 15061B3, this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and a notice of exemption has been prepared. The proposed use is covered by the common sense exemption that CECLAS applies only to projects which have the potential to cause a significant effect on the environment, where it can be seen with certainty that there is no, no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. The activity is not subject to CECLAS. The proposed use is along a highway corridor with several other commercial uses, and the proposed use as described is equally or less intensive than several uses permitted in the C2 zone, such as a gas station or agricultural equipment yard. There is no proposed construction as part of the project either. In conclusion, the project as proposed conforms to applicable goals and policies of the county general plan, and the permitting process allows for the use while giving the opportunity to mitigate impacts to neighbors through permit conditions. The project is found to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning in the general vicinity, and the property is of adequate size to accommodate the proposed use and was found to have safe and adequate access to the site with no improvements required. The permit has been conditioned as necessary for the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss before I make my recommendation?
Any questions for Catherine?
No, when we get to the resolution, I'll ask some.
Yeah. So, would the applicant like to speak and add anything to her description?
Not really, just three spaces.
You're going to need to, if you're going to say anything, maybe at the night, so.
Stay the scene. Thank you. Then, I think we will go ahead and open it up for public comment. And if Annette could just double-check that there's nobody online who would like to speak to this item? I don't, I don't see anybody in the audience.
I don't want to listen to you.
Okay, then we will close the public comment portion of the hearing and return this to the commissioners. Do you guys have any questions of the applicant? Are we ready to talk about the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Tim, I know that you are itching to ask some questions.
Well, I'm, I want to state my appreciation both on this item and on the other items for our Lingbo Council's close attention and the full explanation of legal, possible legal complications. With that in mind, I, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Start with suggestions? The, I would suggest that condition 1-3, be amended to state the applicant shall obtain a valid county business license, and then cross out everything that's there up to within 60 calendar days of approval.
Just to make sure, Anderson, you want to keep in the within 60 calendar days?
Yeah. Yeah. And as far as the conditions 2-5 and 2-6, there's a question as to whether 2-5 is authorized. And I would like you to speak to that.
Yeah, if, if necessary, we can reword this condition to say that if, if council will allow, after a certain period of time, staff will review the permit to make sure they're in compliance, and if not, will bring it before the Planning Commission as required by Chapter 17.90.050 about revocation.
So, the difficulty, there's nothing illegal about having a renewal period for a use permit. Those are, but when there, when such a renewal period exists, it's usually brought forward as part of a zoning ordinance. And so, my concern is not so much that it's illegal. My concern is that I think the Board of Supervisors would want to weigh in before we added something along those lines. So, that would be my recommendation, would be to not put that provision in. Now, as regardless of that, when somebody has a use permit, if they are found to be in violation of it, there is already something on the books allowing for revocation for non-compliance. So, there's nothing preventing, for example, if they didn't get the business license in 60 days, there's nothing preventing the Planning Commission at that point from bringing forward a revocation hearing. So, I don't know that we need to add anything about renewal or inspection period at this point as a condition of approval.
But it would not be, if, if we put in language such as what just suggested, you'd say it's, it's not necessary, but it wouldn't be unauthorized.
But it's not our current practice, it sounds like, and it's not been approved by the board. So, you know, in my opinion, that, that should, we should strike that because if they don't fulfill 1.3, then we can go about revoking their conditional use.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think we should have, I don't think, I, I have a concern that the board would not want to begin a practice of having a renewal as a condition of approval without it being part of a discussion about whether that is going to be something that the board wants to see as a regular practice in the county. This being said, we have something on the books already to allow for revocation if we find that conditions of approval are not being followed. So, I just want to say that even if it's stricken, that doesn't mean the perma-te is allowed to violate the conditions of the CUP.
And I think maybe it would be better.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I think the challenge we have is that we don't have anything within our control that allows us to actually monitor all these places where we have issued conditional use permits in the past. So, we can sit here and approve CUPs all day long, but without the monitoring and, and, and a trigger that allows us to actually determine the progress or the level of compliance. It doesn't really, we're just approving projects, and nobody's monitoring them, and, and we don't even know whether or not they've, they've obtained business licenses or actually left, left the county. So, what we're trying to do here is to have some kind of a trigger point that would enable the planning department to go out and maybe inspect and make sure that all the conditions of approval are met, that there be no complaints, there be no modification to the use itself. So, I think it's a, I think it's a useful, I think it's a useful tool. And I don't think this is something that rises to the level of the board adopting an ordinance because as mitigation measures, we can, we can include conditions in a project that are not authorized by the board. This is just a way for us to monitor the progress of this. Now, if the issue is with the five-year term, I can understand that, but we need to have the tools that we need to be able to monitor these types of businesses because what is the purpose of us sitting here and doing CUPs if, if anything just goes out there?
So, as I understand it, it isn't necessary under the law for the language that was just proposed to come in, but it would serve as a trigger point in your records for you to go out and check?
That's all, that's exactly right. It's a trigger point for us to actually go out and monitor, and I don't think it has to be something that arises to the level of, it's just, think about it as a mitigation measure of an EIR or a negative declaration. It could be anything that would allow us to go out there and be able to monitor these types of uses.
Well, you're allowed to go out there, but this way you will.
Yes, this way you will, yes.
I have a suggestion because I actually think our planning director is speaking to the choir about monitoring and enforcement. But our county has traditionally done enforcement only as a response to complaints from the public. So, that, Catherine and I have talked about this regarding other kinds of permits. And I think, though, that more appropriately, maybe what we need to do is add this to our zoning ordinance discussion to come up with a policy for the monitoring of, so if things are required to have been done within 60 days, maybe we need to, on every single project at, at 90 days, confirm that those things have been done, and then come up with some kind of period for the planning staff, to have a trigger for the planning staff at three years, at five years, whatever you decide is appropriate for different kinds of projects, that there be a search to see if any complaints have come in, and then possibly even have a field visit to just look to see that things haven't been changed. I would be way more comfortable with looking at that on a global basis than trying at this point to add it to this particular project. I just, I don't have a big problem with it. I just don't think it's necessary here.
I, I think that that, I mean, I just think the board, and I'm speaking about the board because the board is my ultimate client. I think the board would be.
The boss, you know, then we are.
And I think that the, the board would want to have a vote on a fairly sweeping, that's, I mean, I agree with, with Mr. Elliott that that would serve a good purpose, and it's not illegal. I don't know that there is anything actually prohibiting the planning commission from checking compliance, even in the absence of it. But I really believe that since the whole discussion of complaint based versus affirmative enforcement has been discussed recently quite a bit by the board, that they would very much want an opportunity to weigh in on it. And I think we could bring it to them that way through drafts and the zoning ordinance. I agree with, with you, Ms. Commissioner Plonak on that.
I do think that if we felt it was important on this particular project to have something, we could restate this in such a way to just, um, inform the applicant that the planning department may be doing, um, reviewing this.
For compliance.
For compliance at, at, within five years.
Do you have any specific language in mind?
I don't know, cause I think it's still in advance far enough. But I think if we just said, um,
Compliance may be monitored prior to, you know, with compliance may be monitored prior to.
May be monitored by planning department at intervals of approximately three to five years.
Sure.
To confirm that all measures are still in place, whatever.
I don't see the difference between, if we put that in here, any difference from what.
No, we're not saying that it's, that we're not having it expire. We're just saying we're gonna monitor, we can't say that.
We're not doing expire.
I'm just saying the planning department may monitor compliance.
Yeah.
With permit conditions.
Yeah, I would be fine with that.
But isn't that what they do now? Isn't it?
No. So there's not done now.
So once, once we issue a conditional use permit, there isn't any follow-up?
It only.
Occurs if there's a complaint.
And that's more by practice than it is by law. But, I mean, I don't think anything would have prohibited.
No.
Monitoring. It's just that before we put in a, a time period or, or a renewal process, we would want. Cause usually when something is renewed, there's a fee adopted with that so that the planning, so the department can pay for the monitoring that they're going to be doing. And certainly the board would wanna talk, talk about, about that piece.
It, it seems like it would take additional staff time too. Is there enough staff to, if this is implemented, to be able to go out and?
But that's why I think it's a discussion for the unites and that I actually think that Julie's language that planning staff may monitor conditions of approval for compliance is a broad enough statement to put people on notice without actually requiring anything different at this time.
And I'd also like to see that language added to all of the conditional use permit resolutions as we, so we move forward.
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Until I'm zoning ordinance.
Administrative use permits, I mean, you have the same, there's no reason for any.
Any, any permit, I think, an event permit.
Right.
Yeah. So that's, everybody feel good about that? I assume you have no problem with that, okay.
And if the board disagrees, they can just direct us to stop putting that in there.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, which number was this again?
It was.
It was two five.
Two five.
Yeah, two five, yeah.
And, and they're planning.
You wrote down that language?
Yes, I did.
That's great.
And so then we just have the item two six, which I believe we just have to strike at this point. And again, probably have further discussion on this in the future. Julie, is that your recommendation?
We, we know that the note, that there needs to be a, yeah, a notice of exemption. I think we need to sort out some of the internal procedures for getting the exemption filed and paid for.
Yes.
So we're, we're just strike that.
So, or we should say, within five calendar days from the date of approval, a notice of exemption shall be, and all applicable fees paid.
No, but that, I mean, we're imposing conditions upon.
No.
The applicant.
No, take out that the applicant should do it.
No, I, but.
It doesn't belong here.
It doesn't belong here, yeah, yeah. So just, I would strike that, uh, two six. Obviously, if the representative of the next, we're not having any problem with. That's what he wants to do. We're just, how we do it is, is what's the question.
Okay.
We're trying to get ourselves organized.
Okay, is there anything else, any other language that any planning commissioner would like to look at?
Nope.
With that, I make a motion.
Oh, let's hear that recommendation. Hold on just one minute.
Recommendation.
Staff recommends the planning commission approve resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero one two with the conditions herein as amended for a CUP to operate a tow yard at three two nine three highway twelve in person, APM zero four eight dash zero one six dash zero zero three in the C two zone.
And the resolution as amended, uh, I make a motion to approve.
Let me second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Passes three zero, I can't remember if it's zero two or two zero, but with two commissioners absent. And you're all set? Is there, um, an appeal possible for this?
Um, Eddie, yeah, this.
Yes, exactly.
This decision is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
Yeah, thank you.
But, but we approved it, so it's all.
Somebody wants to appeal it who's not here, who's listening in.
Oh, I read, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it would have to be on the basis of any objections brought forth today anyway, right? So, so good luck. Thank you. Okay, let's take a look at item two, twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, appeal of a staff decision. And, um, the appellant's are here and the same issue is, um, is applicable to this item, which is there are only three of us here today. So it is at your discretion whether we go forward today with your understanding that it would take a unanimous decision, um, or if you would like to have this continue to a different date. Go forward, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. This is actually an appeal of a planning staff's decision, um, regarding, uh, a building permit application to, uh, for two movable storage sheds uh, on a vacant undeveloped property, approximately twenty acres, uh, without first establishing the, the main residential use per section seventy-six, seven point zero six zero zero eight zero of the county code. Uh, the application was denied on, uh, uh, July fourteen, twenty twenty-three. And Mr. Barber and, and his wife appealed the, the decision on the twentieth. So the decision was actually, the appeal was actually filed within that timeframe for, um, for filing the appeal. The property is located at thirty-five fifty-nine Stagecoach Road in Copperopolis. And I said earlier, it's zone RR and it's approximately twenty acres. Uh, on, uh, July eleventh, Barber Construction submitted a building permit application for a twenty by forty shed, a twenty by twenty structure, and approximately twelve hundred square foot of a motorhome and a deck. Uh, that, uh, plan is identified in figure four of your, um, page five of six of your planning commission report. As part of the permitting process, the planning department reviewed the building permit application submitted by Barber Construction. And, uh, both structures are considered accessory structures, uh, to the main structure. An accessory structure is defined in section seventeen zero six zero zero eight zero B as a usual and customary building normally associated with permitted conditional use. Although incidental and accessory structures are permitted uses in the RR zone, uh, seventeen zero six zero zero eight A of the CCC defines accessory use as a land use that is associated with an existing permitted or conditional use within a zoning district. So the, the whole issue here is that the Barbers have purchased this property as their retirement, uh, 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 property where they would bring in their cattle and, and build a home. Unfortunately, uh, our code, as it's written right now, requires in the RR zone the establishment of the main use first. Uh, in this case, we're getting the two accessory uses first. And, and I think that is where, uh, there is a, um, uh, a conflict of understanding and, and, um, and, uh, I think the Barbers believe that, uh, you know, they have the right to, you know, put in the accessory structures first. And we are saying that our zoning code, uh, doesn't allow that. However, there have been instances where, uh, in the process of building, uh, the main structure, you're allowed to have accessory structures on the property. But in this particular case, I don't think the Barbers have obtained a building permit yet, but I think they're in the process of obtaining one. So we're kind of, where we are right now is, yeah, they're going to build a house eventually. Uh, in the past, when we have made decisions, uh, that allows accessory structure, it was usually based on clear evidence that, uh, there is a significant effort in building the main structure, such as obtaining building permit, having sewer facilities installed, uh, seps, or septic facilities depending, uh, and, and none of those actually exist at this particular time. So that basically, uh, is, is the crux of, of this, of this application. Uh, the Barbers are here, uh, and I think they would, you know, like to defend their position. And we've presented, presented the planning commission with information relevant to our position as well. And, um, we are, you know, recommending that, uh, the commission uh, support staff decision, but you know, the purpose of a public hearing is to allow the planning commission to make that determination regardless of staff's recommendation. Thank you.
I have a question on that. On, on page six of the staff report, about in the middle, there's a paragraph about the planning department would like the appellant's to be aware. And it goes into a provision that permits a, a mobile home uh, on property while building a permanent residence. When I first read that, I thought that you were hinting, well, if they could put that on the, on the property now, but I don't think you are saying that.
No, uh, what I was actually referring to is, um, page five, the elevation submitted. If you look at figure four, uh, and if you also look at figure three. So, uh, in figure three to the left, you see, uh, shed number one. Then you see, you see shed number two. You see the, uh, motorhome and a deck and a little, a little storage unit. So, uh, these were the plans that were submitted. And even though the focus of the attention at this particular time is on the two storage sheds, uh, on the plans are the, the, the motorhome and, and, and the other apartment structure as well.
So, but wouldn't that indicate an intent to live on that piece of property, having a, a pad for a motorhome?
And a cover and a net.
Well, I mean, I, 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 you know, they, they, they live in the Escalon. And, and I think, uh, maybe what that, what that indicates without implicating them is when they do come, you know.
They're gonna have a place.
They're gonna have a place to stay temporarily. But if this becomes a temporary housing for them prior to the construction of the new house, then, uh, what Commissioner Ladish just read on page six now becomes, becomes something that we have to be aware of. Because there are, there are rules and regulations regarding that, that as well. And, and so, but I, I don't really know what their intentions are.
The language while building a permanent residence, is that part of the statute inside here?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and would you need a permit to put an RV on your property? To, I mean, I guess to connect to, I mean, you would have, have a septic system in, I'm assuming to connect the RV. But does that RV then, is there any, are there any permits that have to be pulled for that? Or can they just park an RV?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, thank you.
It's gonna come down to power and a septic system. So tho, those are the permits. But what they are not asking for is a pad to park their RV. They're actually looking at building a storage structure for an RV with a deck. And, but that's not described in this project, which is part of the confusion here. It's, but those are the drawings that are shown. So, so I think we can deal with that one pretty simply, maybe ahead of everything. But perhaps we want a look, yeah, like we'll finish.
Just to answer your question, now, if you are hinting to the fact that do you need a permit to have an RV on your property, I think the answer is it depends on what you already have on your property. If you already have a single-family residential structure, then having an RV is, is, is some, is secondary. If you have nothing on your property at all, and the first thing you have on your property is the RV, then we have a section in our code that actually deals with that. And, um, it is allowed during construction of a main residence.
Sure.
The initial, uh, the initial, um, uh, permit period is six months. Now, those six months could be extended, uh, based on progress being made. But I think the intent, um, you know, uh, again, is not to have, uh, RR zone properties and similar properties, uh, being, uh, used for purposes uh, other than, you know, having a, you know, having a main residence so that we don't have an RV on every large property and there's no main structure on them.
Correct. Uh, traditionally, we have allowed people to live on their property in a temporary situation while their home is being constructed. And there's quite a few extensions available. So sometimes, especially if people are building themselves, owner builders could take some time.
In this particular appeal, it's only the two storage sheds.
Are, are the topic of this appeal, right?
Of the topic of this appeal.
So.
But, you know, unfortunately, the way the, the ordinance is written now, you know, it's, it, they both require to be permitted first before you can go ahead and put a storage shed on. And then it's the agricultural piece too, where you have to establish the residence before you move the cattle on. So, um, hopefully there's.
I have a different interpretation of our code than that. But, but that's, to each of us have had an opportunity to read it and see what we think.
Let me hear a different interpretation. I, I, I'm, I'm open to hear a, a different interpretation.
Before we discuss it in detail, we should hear from the applicant or the appellant's in this case. So would you guys like to come on up and speak?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Ty Barber and.
Mary Helen.
We, we bought this place about four months, just four months ago. And we've done a lot already. We've already got power, P G N E, we've already had well water. And we're in contract actually with the Delta Engineering for the septic. My architect's gonna take a while to design the house. We are gonna live here. This is gonna be a retirement place. We fell in love with this place three years ago. So the positive, we will build a house, but for now, they're gonna finish the fencing next week. We wanna bring in our cows. We have cows in another property. And the two shed that kinda more important is, one shed is for the hay, keep it dry. And the other shed is to keep all my equipment in-house, like tractor, I have, you know, a couple of four-wheelers and side-by-side or any equipment, you know, so. So at least they don't get wet and stuff, but we're in the process. We will build a house. This is our retirement place, but it takes a little bit of time. So while we're doing that, you know, I kinda wanna do the two shed for now. So, you know, so we have something to
May I ask you? May I ask you about your electrical service? So is it a full service or is it a service, an egg service to do the well pump? And I don't know what kind of septic system you have.
It's a 200 amp P G N E service that just been finished. That was done by the original, the previous owner. Cause they were gonna build a house also.
Right.
So that power, but it powers the, the well water right now.
Yeah. So, so it's interesting that they were able to get a service without a building permit. So I wonder if they had pulled a building permit and then not built the house.
I'm not sure.
You don't need to know that.
And then when we bought the place, there was actually storage there already. We took that out because it looked kinda ugly. So, you know, for now, we just need something to store all our stuff and the hay. We don't have, we don't have a RV. It's the reason why we have that on the plan also, because later on, when we do build a house, we're gonna get an RV and then we want it to park on the RV, you know?
Live on the property while it's.
Yeah. So we don't have, we're not gonna live there now. We live in Escalon, but you know, while we were submitting a permit, we went ahead and put all that on the plan and I, we did pay for the plant check for all four buildings. And then we also paid for a encroachment permit. So we're doing everything right. I'm a contractor, so I do everything the right way. That's why.
So the two sheds that are really the focus of this appeal, what, there are no drawings for those or pictures of what these sheds are?
Actually, we have drawings, we have engineering, we submitted with it. They're, they're movable, they're the portable type of shed. They're the one that you put on the ground and you drive straight to it.
Okay.
If we already have those from another property, we're just gonna transfer them. But we submitted all the engineering from the manufacturer. Everything was submitted to, to the building.
So are these metal sheds there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
The metal sheds are just, they kind of park them together and you drive straight down to it.
Right. So.
Those are the two.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be practical or possible not to move the cattle on that property until you pull a permit for a house?
Well, kinda the reason why you bought this property because the place where we have it, it's only three acres. And we're having a hard time feeding them because, you know, there's 10 adults and four babies.
Wow.
This property will keep them busy. They can eat all the grass and keep the place clean. We already cleaned the place. We took out all the dead trees. I mean, this place is spotless except the grass. It's this high, so we brought them there because it's, it's a bigger place for them. And that's why we're putting in a fencing all the way around to keep them, you know? But, but at the same time, we need a, a cover for the hay because you have to give them a different type of food other than just the grass.
That's a lot of cows.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So I, I just wanna, I'm sorry, I, I, do you understand why you're, you're, why you're appealing to us and why the planning department rejected?
Yes, I do because we are gonna build a house.
Right.
The meantime, the architect's gonna take time to design it. In fact, we just contracted with septic, with a septic Delta company because we had to tell them where the house is gonna be. So we finally figured out where it's gonna be, where the septic is. So to do the house design, it takes, it's gonna take at least eight months because a lot of engineering involved, structural. But the meantime, we can bring the cows in and then we're there every weekend. You know, we love the place, so if anyone, I like to do something or keep an eye on the cows, so.
I really don't have a question, but I, I welcome you to the county. It was a wonderful, it may not sound very welcoming to you, what we're doing, but, but it, it, we have to follow the statutes. And, and we appreciate the fact that you applied for the building permits. Didn't just put those sheds on the property.
Well, we don't wanna be like others that just do whatever. I was told, why didn't you guys, you said just done it? I said, I'm a contractor, I believe in doing things right, so. I took whatever I have to pay. I even offered to pay like a bond to show that we are gonna build a house. I made that offer. So our plan is to build a house. That's, that's our place.
Well, we appreciate your intent and we welcome you to the county.
That's her place. He loves the place.
I love it. Three years ago, we'd been looking around the rest of it. And we're blessed that we got this, bro.
That's great.
Thank you. I think we will go ahead and open up the, for public comments. Annette. So now we'll close the opportunity for public comments. Come back to the commissioners for more discussion. I don't know who, who would like to start.
Well, I'll, I'll mention a few things. I think the shed for the agricultural use, I think is so specifically covered by the agricultural accessory building provisions that I think that's where we need to look because the law, when you're confronted with two statutes and one is more specific and one is more general and the specific one applies to your case, that's what the law prefers you to look at. And that statute requires an administrative use permit to have an accessory agricultural building. And now, so I, I, I think we have to deny the appeal on, on, at least on that ground, which leaves you up in the air as far as if we, we do that and you apply for administrative use permit. Before you do that, I would discuss things with the planning department as to whether that's gonna get you anywhere further. But as of now, I think we need to look at that statute as the governing statute and, and deny the appeal as to, this is just me. But then as to the other shed, legal counsel has been very good at laying out all the various questions that can be, should be looked at. The law also does not like absurd results. And to, to separate the the accessory use from the accessory building, if we could grant permission for the accessory building at this point, but say you can't use it, seems to me would be rather absurd. That I, I feel that the planning department is actually, has in its tradition, has gone, has interpreted the statute rather liberally by saying, as long as you have a building permit, you can then have the accessory structure. And again, that makes sense. You have the building permit and you need an accessory structure for your tools and et cetera. It'd be silly, absurd to require you to have the building in existence, the primary building in existence, before you could have this accessory building. So it, since there has not been a permit applied for or greeted, my tendency, subject to the discussion with the other commissioners, would be that I'm gonna need to affirm the decision as to that structure also on the basis that the, of what the planning commission, the planning department decided that you at least have to have a building permit before you can have the accessory structure that will support the building of the building. That's where I'm.
So I took a completely different approach to looking at this, partially because I've been in the county a long time and have been involved with projects like this where a barn has been the first structure built on a piece of property that was rural residential. And obviously zoning codes have changed over the years. I mean, I'm talking about a forty year stretch here. But so, so it forced me to go back through and read our zoning code the way it's currently written and the way we need to enforce. But I see nothing that precludes you from establishing the agricultural, agricultural component of the use of your land as your first use. So bringing the cows onto the land seems to me, there's nothing that would stop you from doing that. But of course, what you're really looking for is to get the two sheds on there. But I, I wanna kind of just take the, the RV piece off the table. It's clear that that cannot be allowed until you have a building permit for a primary residence. I, I agree with everybody on that. I think it, these got kind of combined together in an awkward way here for us, but we're really talking about the two sheds to support having the cattle on the land. And when I read through this, I look at it and I see that there are permitted uses in the RR zone that include agricultural operations, incidental and accessory structures, processing and manufacturing, residential uses, and then a whole bunch of other things. So if we say that we are looking for agricultural operations and then I go and look at what might be required, we have the awkward, separate definitions of accessory uses and accessory structures, which seems to just be muddying the waters in our case. However, if I look at conditional uses, I see that only processing and manufacturing, which is a different use than agricultural operations, has the requirement for accessory structures to be, to require an administrative use permit. I don't see that an administrative use permit would be required for agricultural operations and those utility or accessory structures. So I see a way to get to allowing those structures so long as they are clearly agricultural only structures, which has in the past been interpreted to mean that they could not have any power to those structures.
So you don't believe that the permit has to be pulled first as the trigger to allow for the agricultural use? You're, what you're saying is that in an RR zone, that the agriculture can be the primary and not the secondary use?
I'm saying it can be established on the property, but that, that in the end, the, I don't think it could be expanded to be more than cattle running on the property. As soon as you tried to, to like the processing and any fact, say you wanted to turn that into a winery.
Right.
Or you wanted to have a farm there and have retail sales there or any of those other things that are described later as possibilities. I don't believe that that would be the intention of it.
Only questioning, I'm not, in some way, I'm not disagreeing. So with his herd, that herd then becomes his pets? So he chooses not to sell the steers or the heifers?
I don't think that that's precluded. I also think that there's a benefit to the community and the neighbors of having the cattle on there in keeping the, the grass down, so.
I agree.
Maybe I've misinterpreted the law. I thought an administrative use permit is needed for a, an accessory agricultural.
Only, it's only listed under processing and manufacturing's use, which is a separate use under the permitted uses. And the description is that for a winery or oil presses and other uses, which makes perfect sense to me because those are different kinds of structures. And in fact, in the past, no permits were even required for truly agricultural buildings. So I, I think part of this is that times change over time and things get added and, and removed from the zoning code in attempts to clarify it. And then, and really what happens is things get muddier and muddier and muddier when something that looks really simple was not simple. I mean, there was all this stuff to read and, and to try to understand what the original intent was. So my interpretation is definitely colored by my historical perspective on how this has been applied.
Which I very much respect. And I believe that you have convinced me as far as the agricultural accessory structure. If they can have cattle on the property, again, we're getting back to, let's hope the law makes sense. And if they can have their cattle on the property, it would make sense that they could have a structure to keep hay from getting wet. And if the administrative use permit is not required, then I, I, I believe I've become convinced as far as the, the hay shed, that was the agricultural accessory. I'm not convinced as far as the other structure that's to support the building of a building that there's no permit for yet.
No, I don't, oh, for the storage of materials and.
Storage of materials and tools and.
I would agree with you on that. I, yes. I also completely see how we got to this point. I think it really speaks to the importance of our next project, our zoning code update. Because somebody coming in completely new to this and reading through it, you could just tangle yourself all day in what is the intention here? That's.
And I don't mean to say that the law always makes sense, but if you can make sense of the law, I'm all in favor of it.
Yeah. So.
It seems to me, and, and I, I appreciate your comments because I'm also trying to figure out a way to meet halfway, you know, where's the compromise position here? But it seems to me when these ordinances were, were, were written, you know, the RR zoning not only protects folks that have just purchased a piece of property, but all the properties around them. And we recently dealt with the case where someone had interpreted the RR zone to mean one thing and the residents around them said, hey, wait a minute, that's, you can't allow that activity in an RR zone. So, and, and help me understand that it's not a stretch to believe that if I purchased 20 acres, it was zoned RR, I could go ahead and just put my cattle on there as a primary use of that property?
Permitted uses, agricultural operations.
And, and so my hangup is, I always assumed that that was a permitted use once you had established the residence. That's how I read this package.
It has a bunch of super script stuff that does talk about that, but it, but there is not one for agricultural operations.
And I think where your impression comes from is where I, I was getting the same impression is the, the purpose statement for the RR zone. It said intended to provide lands for personal entrances in which residential use is the primary land use. The RR zone is established to permit small, small scale farming primarily for personal use and not as the primary use for this property. use and not as the primary use for this property. Um, so going into it with just that on the horizon, it, it sounds as if, I mean, that would seem to lead to the conclusion that, well, no, you can't run the cattle before you have the, you have the, the primary use established.
But it doesn't seem to say that when you dig further and I, and I don't think that that has, I, I would say there's probably many RR parcels in the county that already have cattle on them or horses.
As a primary.
That just there and it, that are there. People plan to build a house on it ultimately, but they have moved their animals there in it.
I, I am sure there are cases out there where people are leasing ground to run their cows and it's zoned RR. You know, I agree. So are we at a point where we're at a consensus that we, we could allow the, the hay shed and the cows, but not allow the, the storage until they pull a permit for, for the intended use of that?
That's where I am.
That's where I am.
That's, I could be there.
We'll do that.
So do you folks understand what we are talking about? We're, we're trying to find a window of opportunity to allow you to move your cows out there, build the hay barn, but say that the other structure to store equipment cannot be allowed until you pull a permit to build your residence? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, I understand about the, the other two buildings that for the RV and stuff. I'm not worried about that. I will do that when we have a permit for the house. My main thing right now is the two metal buildings.
So we are just talking about, one, the hay barn being allowed, but the second metal building not being allowed until you establish the, uh, have a permit to establish a primary home use. Because you're talking about that building being used to hold things, tools, equipment and stuff for the building of the house. It's not primarily an agricultural structure. And just re-characterizing it here today is probably not gonna win the day.
The second building is actually for the equipment to, you know, like tractors and all that stuff for.
Yeah.
It's not really equipment to build a house yet, you know? It's not a, you know, we're not there yet, so.
I, I think, um, given the messiness of this and the, the fine gray line, you should take the win for the hay barn.
Which, which building you, you make as the hay barn is up to you as, as another consideration in, in my opinion. I mean, you can have one structure on that property. That's what we are saying. And that structure should be associated with you running the cows.
The agricultural.
The agricultural. That's our consensus. Is, did I do it?
You got it.
Sorry.
And I'm very pleased to have been able to accept a drawback from what my initial, initial position.
Again, I will be so happy to have updated zoning ordinances that make it easier. Okay, so.
Well, this resolution isn't. Okay. So this is an appeal. So how?
Yeah, so we, we don't have a document. We just.
It's, it's, I understand that they applied for a building permit. Building referred that to the planning department and the department, uh, denied a zoning clearance.
Yes, go ahead. I was gonna try to clarify that probably at this point you're going to, uh, withdraw your other permit applications and you should be able to request a refund of those deposits and then proceed only with the hay barn temporary structure.
Okay, so.
I, I, I had it myself. We haven't taken a vote, so. But, so Gabriel, I think we, and Julie.
We would.
What's the wording we want for this?
Give us some time to come back with the, we want it much intertwined on both of them and the rezo, so I hope we can come back at the next meeting with the rezo.
Sure.
And then we know that we don't, you know, we know that the commission, the three commissioners.
Yes.
Even if, even if the fourth didn't agree, but he had heard. Yeah. So anyhow, we're, we're set on the, on the result.
Yes.
Do you think that the?
And the resolution's gonna need.
Resolution needs to reflect that the denial was for all three requests and the appeal was to the two sheds.
So let's make, can we continue this particular, so we should continue this hearing then to the twenty eighth for hearing of the resolu, for consideration of the resolution?
I, I would agree with you. You guys agree?
So shall I move to continue?
Yes, please.
And then you shouldn't have anything to worry about further than what we've done today. Uh, we just need to get the, the actual written resolution, uh, in a form where we can say, yes, that's what we meant. But the result will be you get the one building for the agricultural accessory building, uh, but your, your appeal as to the other temporary building will be denied.
So before I go to the, to the stadium for the permit, I wait for you.
Wait for two weeks.
I would like to move that we, uh, we continue this for consideration of a revised resolution to our next meeting, which assume our next, we are having.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Well, good luck.
And welcome.
Yes. Okay, should we take a break before we attack greenhouse gases?
I think that would be good because Mike has not had a chance to look at this.
Look at this. This is, these are the comments that were from our meeting, our study session?
This is.
Yes.
Do you, do you wanna, so we can discuss it? You wanna open the?
Okay, I take back a break for a brief discussion before we take a break.
Okay, what you're gonna see here is, uh, the chair and I have come up with a joint approach.
Okay.
And that's gonna be reflected in purple in here.
Okay. It's primarily a response to the comments of the commissioners at our last meeting.
And in here, in red, is the, or the notations that the planning director made, and I really admire the attention you paid at the time, uh, of, of trying to get down exactly what the consensus was at that point. So the red is, is Director Elliott's, uh, the purple is Commissioner, uh, Watanabe. Okay. And what we are trying to do, um, as this first notation on the first page, kind of gives you an idea of, of the framework, but we are trying to get a, uh, greenhouse gas, uh, reduction plan that will meet the requirements of the forty percent reduction of emissions within Calabars County, um, forty percent below ninety high D levels, which is what our general plan requires, but meet that in ways that are, uh, uh, less onerous than they otherwise might be.
Perfect.
Okay, that's where, that's where we're going.
Right.
Be great.
Yes, and, um, I think our plan is to go through with them item by item, but just try to move as quickly as possible and spend our time on just the few things where there is any kind of substantive new.
Okay.
So now would everybody like a break?
How long of a break do you like? Oh, I'm okay. I mean, with, with.
Ten minutes?
Sure.
Come back at twenty to eleven?
Sure. Good.
Thank you. So we are, this is an informational item continued from our previous discussions, and we are going to go ahead and work through our updated draft of greenhouse gas measures.
Absolutely.
And Gabriel, is there anything you wanna do to introduce this?
I'm, I'm the chair members of the planning commission. Um, just to, uh, kind of give you, um, a roadmap as to where we are. The last time we had a meeting, we, we had the consultants, uh, with us, and, uh, the planning commission, uh, suggested some changes, which I have incorporated into, uh, the July seventeen, twenty twenty-three, uh, um, uh, document we received from, from Rincon. Um, in my conversations with them, uh, they implored the planning commission, and I did confirm with them that it is not the intention of the planning commission to significantly modify or change the intent or veracity of the conditions. Because in their opinion, uh, if we change specific figures, numbers, percentages, it affects the outcome. And I'm telling them that the intention of the planning commission is to implement language that allows, uh, the county some flexibility, you know, such as pursue funds for rather than, you know, something of that nature. So, and, and that has been the way that we have approached, uh, this, this process. And from what I've seen, I don't really think there's anything that we've done that would change the effectiveness of the measures themselves. Now, I did tell the consultants that we discovered there are certain measures that were, uh, that needed to be moved from one category to another, and I think we caught a few of those. But I, I still don't think in total that, uh, uh, there was any significant difference between the report that they gave us and what we actually are doing, uh, to, to the document. So moving forward, after this exercise, um, we would be holding, uh, and Julie can correct me if I'm wrong, there will be a joint session between the planning commission and the board of supervisors, uh, to kind of go over where we are in the process, and then we will move on to the next stage. Is there anything, uh, you'd like?
I, I guess, you know, I, I guess if we, if the commission does recommend some substantive changes, I guess the question is, are we going to have the consultants do final calculations before that joint planning commission, board of supervisors session?
Well, it's all a question of what substantive, um, in.
Maybe we need to re, yeah, revisit this at the end and see if you and Director Elliott feel that anything we've done has changed the big picture.
Now, I'm the chair. Actually, what I would do is I would take whatever, uh, the outcome of this session is, and I would send it to the consultants for their review. I, I think there will be, there will be amenable to reviewing it to tell us whether or not it's actually changed, uh, any of the, uh, any of the measures.
And I, I think when you send it to them, I think.
I'll send it in color.
It's. But the, the reason online to you is that the, the formatting is so strange with this. Sometimes the colors switch.
I know.
All of a sudden your comments will be in blue.
Yes, absolutely.
Where did this come from?
I, I get it.
So I wanted to get a, a static for a chat.
Yeah, yeah.
And when I send, I sent it online to you, if you could make sure the colors are right.
It would be, it would be.
And when, when you send it to them, you can confirm that the colors are right.
Well, possibly, um, if it turns out that either of us are typing in things, we could send it as a PDF and a doc file and see if the PDF file holds the colors.
Whatever. It just, it's just important that, and we talk about what's in purple and what's in red.
Absolutely. As long as it's on in track changes, I think we would be able to maintain, uh, the, the color scheme because what, what Michelle would work on and what you would work on would come, would come through with different colors. I just don't know the, the, the chemistry behind assigning colors to some of the comments.
We just saw that for some reason, stuff that had been changed to a color would change again.
Yeah.
But we, we didn't do it.
Right.
It just happened. I'm wondering if though, I might be ahead of myself here, when we send this to the board of supervisors for review, I would think we would want to just be sending a completely clean copy.
Clean, yes.
Otherwise, we're gonna drive up crazy.
Yeah.
I, I think maybe send them a clean copy, but allow for comments from commissioners.
Yes.
Explaining what we've done.
Right.
Um, I think would may, maybe be the way to do it.
Yeah, or send a clean copy and then attach the, the color comments as well so that they have time to read.
Yes, I, I think it, it's necessary that.
Right.
That, that they're gonna get this cold.
I know. Yeah.
Well, we're, we're worried about that when we.
Okay.
Right. Okay, should we go ahead and get started? I think. The, the first things are on page five, the first edits, and they're the very minor edits, like typos and pursue funding, things that we discussed at the last meeting. I don't know if they require any discussion.
I think, I think basically it's, it's for the commissioner that wasn't involved in drafting this to say, go on or, no problem.
No, I'm, I'm good. Okay.
Same thing next page, just, uh, conceptually, we just changed municipal to county pretty consistently since we're not a city.
We're not a city.
And pursuit, more pursuit funding.
Yeah.
And then on page eight.
Now, let me explain the.
Yeah, let's.
Purple there. Um, uh, the, the changes within the, the black text, uh, were what we considered necessary for, uh, to the scope and the, uh, clarity of the provision. The, the part at the end was moved from the, uh, from CS one at the direction of the commission at the last meeting. So that's.
And it's just general plan language moved to the place that it's the best fit for.
Yeah. And so, and if anything, the language that's been added to the, the black print part, um, would be more, uh, inclusive than the, uh, than the others, so it shouldn't affect anything. Any, uh.
And the, the changes to the first part of the measure really were grammatical more than anything else, just, yeah. Okay.
Two, three.
And EB four.
EB four is more of a clarification.
Yeah, this was, um, we, we had discussed the exception, so I just looked up the right language for things. And the fifty-five hundred foot is simply the elevation that I and my consultants generally use as the spot above which we don't use electrical heating equipment. So just because of challenges with installing it and its operation at those, that, that's why the comment about reviewing it, because I. because I suspect three years from now, we will have plenty of equipment available that will be appropriate, just right now.
But, you know, even, even if you had equipment, I mean, look, look at, you know, the, the recent strikes or the snow level and et cetera. I mean, to rely on electricity for heat up there may be a daunting task, you know, so.
Yeah, so it's a whole big picture looking at it.
Right.
So, and when we create the ordinance, that we'll have another opportunity. Is that going to happen as quickly as next year? We hope so, because by 2025, we're supposed to have it. So, that's, we didn't want to get into the weeds on it.
Yes.
That, that's the basic point, but not do anything that would reduce the quantification.
Right.
Next page is primarily all language we actually discussed at our last meeting. And then we get to NC four. And I think I have a change to this one.
A change to the change.
To change to the change. This is the adopting an ordinance to require EPA compliant wood burning appliances. I put, including stoves, cook stoves and factory-built fireplaces. Cook stoves, there are some available that are EPA compliant, but very, very few. And I think most of the time that a person has a wood burning cook stove, they are, it's either going to be as part of the limited density thing, so they'll be exempt anyway, or that it might be in a historic structure. So I was thinking perhaps historic structures should be an exempted category so that they could continue to use a historically accurate wood stove. It's going to be so few projects that-
What, what were you going to add there?
So, I was going to take out cook stoves from the first.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Was that line three of the purple?
Yes, line three, the purple.
Three.
So, and then it says, with an exception for projects permitted under the limited density owner-built dwelling permit program, or as may otherwise be stated in the most currently adopted housing element. So the question is whether we want to identify historic, listed historic buildings as also exempt. But that, that would actually be in the second paragraph because that's when it talks about replacement.
Okay.
Oh, okay, let's, let's go into that. Is there, is there a need, when, when we're in the second paragraph, is there a need to repeat the parenthetical phrase, EPA Phase Two certified stoves currently produced?
No, I don't think so.
Take that out of the second paragraph.
Yeah. I did it because there was some, a description in the original language.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need to define that again.
I, I see an open parentheses where I don't see a close. Oh, there it is.
It's hiding.
Okay, so you strike out anything in parentheses in there?
On the second paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
So I was just thinking that after limited density owner-built dwelling permit program, comma, listed historic structures, or as otherwise may be. Sorry, guys, should have thought of that the first time.
Okay, okay.
Anybody have any concerns about any of that?
No.
Okay, now we're on to TR one.
Ah, TR one.
And that, that's Tim's to discuss.
Yeah, this, last time when we, when we had the consultants here, I, I proposed a, a change to TR one, which basically would leave it to this, uh, plan group to come up with what we needed as far as charging stations and this sort of thing. Uh, it was clear that wasn't going to fly with the consultants. So I looked to their responses to the questions I had raised in an earlier draft. And we got these responses distributed to us at the beginning of the last meeting. But, uh, so I'm relying on it. Response number eleven gave, answered my question to how they got to this, uh, number of charging stations that were required. And they ended up saying that they're, uh, since by 2030, there'll be over sixty-two thousand vehicles registered in the county. Over fifteen thousand will need to be zero emission. So what I did was take that fifteen thousand vehicle as the, the goal. We have to serve fifteen thousand vehicles with charging stations. And I have expanded in TR one that, that will be, that this, this plan group that, that is provided for in TR one will consider the, the slower charging stations, the DC-powered fast charging stations and private charging stations in determining whether we have, will have sufficient charging stations in the county to serve fifteen thousand electric vehicles by, by 2030. And I am not limiting that to vehicles that are registered. What we're interested in here, I mean, registered in the county, what we're interested in here is cutting down emissions. So we are looking at vehicles of tourists. We're looking at vehicles of second, uh, homeowners. We're looking at vehicles within the county that are emitting the greenhouse gases. And so, this will task the county with coming up exactly what mix of charging stations are required in order to serve fifteen thousand vehicles. Fifteen thousand vehicles sounds like a lot. It's what the consultants require. I'm beginning to think that, that's, this is where the, uh, where, where we're going. I mean, the state is going to ban all new car sales of anything but zero emission vehicles by 2035. And so, um, I think, I think we've hit upon a way to satisfy the computational reduction, but do it in a way that with the various incentives and the funding that we're to pursue, we're not going to bankrupt the county, and we're going to come up with a reasonable plan to serve fifteen thousand vehicles by 2030.
So, Commissioner Elysh,
Yeah.
um, are you, are you implying that those ninety-nine new publicly accessible plugging, the, the original recommendation?
We're going to need at least that.
You're going to need at least that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that, that's, that's why we kept that-
Right.
in.
Okay.
It's what, whether we're going to need five hundred more or-
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
And, and that, I think we can leave up to the, whenever we're going to, the zero emissions vehicle infrastructure implementation plan to really look at where these could be, what kind of, what publicly available
Yeah.
uh, charging stations. There could be, uh, how many private are going to be? We can keep a tab on, on what, how many privates are being-
Yeah. I, I don't know if the commission is aware that CCOG is actually put out on RFB and have selected a consulting firm to do a study for charging stations in the entire county.
Well, that's, that's great.
Yeah.
But, and, you know, and then maybe that will be a lot of what this plan, the zero emissions vehicle plan is. And we're in this, in this TR one, we're, we're getting away from just assuming everything's going to be electric vehicles.
Right.
Um, and we have put in, uh, at the, at the very beginning, uh, that's right, this, this one is numbered. Page thirteen, the topic sentence
Yeah.
there, uh, at the end says, as new non-fossil fuel vehicle technologies develop, provide for refueling, recharging alternatives in addition to battery charge.
Right.
Now, I also, I also remember that the commission wanted to discuss private, uh, charging stations as well, private facilities.
And that, and that, and that's in here.
We, yeah, we added that.
I have that in here. Cause that, personally, if I'm going to get an electric vehicle, I'm going to get a charging station at my house. Because the, the, the longer, uh, the, the charging stations that take longer, and we're talking in four to six hours. It, I noticed that there, there's a double charging station at the gas station in Arnold now, the larger gas station. And they're both the DC fast chargers, which makes sense because we're talking, instead of we're talking
Right.
half an hour, half an hour.
Right.
Um, so, I, I think having that flexibility built into the zero emissions vehicle infrastructure implementation plan makes sense. And yet we're holding ourselves to this fifteen thousand vehicle.
That's exactly.
That was the, the basis for the computation.
Okay.
We, we wanted to basically say, we have to have a way to accommodate fifteen thousand, but we don't want to limit, we don't want to say, you're going to have this many of this and this many of that because two years from now, the super fast charging stations might be much less expensive and much more readily available.
Right.
And so then why tell people that a third of your parking lot has to be if you could actually accommodate the same number of vehicles in fewer spaces?
And that's another thing we've done is, um, the, let's see, I know it's paragraph five. We have, as far as commercial development that's being, uh, new, that's either new or remodeled. We're saying that has, this applies only to those with a total of ten or more parking spaces. And that, uh, we require a percentage of all parking spaces to have EV chargers available, at least thirty percent of Level Two chargers, which is what the consultant's draft said, thirty percent.
Right.
At least five percent of DC fast chargers, it's about a six.
Okay.
So, and I think, I don't know the difference in cost, but, uh, I would think that a business would very much prefer to have five percent.
Yeah.
And, and I have, and I should, I should point to my co-author here. I have put in, let's see. Uh, the last sentence in paragraph eleven is, also work with CCAPD to pursue funding to assist businesses and organizations in installing public available chargers. Because otherwise, it sounded as if we were just putting-
And that's what the CalCOG program is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, and now, if I were the consultants and I was looking at this, I'd say, oh, they've changed this. Well, I've changed the order in which the subjects were taken because I felt that it, and, and changed what the topic sentence is, just to make this make more sense.
Absolutely.
But I think, uh, I, I think we don't lose the computations by having it arranged this way. And I think it's, it's, this would be done in a way that we, the county needs to get the funding in order to do this. We're not going to bankrupt the county in the process of getting it.
And it's probably going to draw a lot of attention and discussion. But we didn't believe that we could reduce what the consultants provided us. All we could do was try to make sure there was more flexibility. We were really concerned that we mentioned that there may be other technology that would also be decarbonizing besides EVs, so.
Absolutely.
Oh, one thing I'd mention, and then this is at the bottom. Let's see, Mike, I have some page numbers that aren't numbered here. So I'll say, you know, there's twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Pages fourteen and fifteen, where I'm setting forth the paragraphs that we've replaced. And a lot of these, we haven't replaced the subject matter. We've just redrafted them. That, uh, there's, oh, I'm sorry, this, well, I'm, yeah, paragraph three, GR one point three, as the consultants originally had it. The, uh, they had kind of special procedure provisions for Murphy's, San Andreas and Valley Springs, which I thought was an invitation to controversy.
Yeah.
I don't know that maybe you were going to say, well, we don't have that. It's in mountain ranch, for heaven's sakes, mountain ranch should be in.
Yes.
Yet it really is covered by this plan that is provided for both by the consultants and in our provisions. And so I, I just took that out. Okay.
I don't want anyone to feel orphaned.
Yeah, okay.
He likes it, that's good.
Mikey likes it.
Mikey likes it. Pass him another bowl.
The next one is TR two, which just was minor pursue funding and things we had discussed previously. There's, Tim's added an explanation there of why some information was melded into another measure.
So my only question-
We duplicated employees in, in one of the measures.
My only question is, which is now the new number four, allow eligible county employees to telecommunicate with a target rate of twenty-five percent. How is the public going to be able to access if there's twenty-five less employees? We're talking about per department? We're talking about overall or certain if we're going to target-
Overall, the county already is, has a program.
There already is a-
Oh, they already do. And is the public okay with not having access sometimes? I mean, I, I've heard some complaints.
Well, that's a whole nother.
I know, I know. And maybe, I don't want to muddy the waters, but-
Yeah. Commissioner Schmenter, there are certain departments that can't really afford to have this kind of program, departments where you have to interact correctly with the public. But for other agencies that don't need that daily interaction with the public, you know, like the DA's office, for example, you know, they, they can, they can telecommute more than some other departments within the county. Now, I don't know which complaints you've received so far, but there is currently a, a program in the county for telecommuting. And, and I think, I don't even think we have twenty-five percent of the total employees that participate in that program. So it's-
It's a goal for 2030.
It's a goal, yeah.
Also, a lot of employees that were working remotely were able to interact with people by email or phones. So it wasn't like that they weren't unavailable entirely. I think the, the biggest complaints I hear are, are like, um, the days that the land use departments are closed half a day.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
And we can't remember which way that is.
And that is not because of telecommu-, that's not because of telecommuting.
Okay.
I don't know, or page eighteen?
Seventeen, you know.
Seventeen, how?
It's just, uh, this is funding-
And this is- Super minor.
Wonderful, wonderful public transit section. It's, uh, Pritkin County, which is the model for this, is the county in Colorado that contains Aspen and is one of the highest income counties in the United States. But this is all conditioned on- But, this is all conditioned on pursue, uh, getting the funding. And we say pursue funding because we were told early in this thing that pursue is an action word, uh, and satisfies the need for the, uh, for computation. And then the only other change that I was suggesting here is that we've, we've renamed this electric vehicle infrastructure implementation plan to zero emissions vehicle.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyhow, it'd be wonderful to have all that. So, can I go on to TR four?
Yes.
Yeah.
On TR four, the first was just a, a clarification, since some of these topic sentences, uh, talk about what the final goal is as far as percentage reduction or increase. This one is increase it by one percent, so I put into a total of four percent, which is what they.
Which was the number they had.
They.
We didn't change it.
Okay.
Then, uh, wanna take paragraph three?
Paragraph three.
That my understanding is we already have.
So, we already have.
Oh, right, so we talked, talked about that, there's money that comes for active transportation every year to the cities and counties through Caltrans, um, that is already earmarked for bike and pedestrian pathways, so we just, um, we're saying we don't need to pursue funding for that one, where there's already funding, we could pursue additional funding if we wanted to, but the county is, always has a, a expansion of their bike and pedestrian facilities plan going.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? I guess I've got the sentence, increase active transportation mode share one percent to a total of four percent, TR three?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's currently, it's gone to three.
Increases three by one percent, so that the, the total active transportation within the county, in a particular area, would be four percent.
Oh, okay. It should say by one percent.
Right.
We're missing the by.
Let's do a by.
That's what's confusing.
Yeah. Okay. And, uh, then on, on paragraph four, um, there's a one typo that would need to be corrected, but then the, the, the long purple part is something that we last time decided needed to be moved from the, you know, the sequestration provision.
Yeah.
That's, that's what that is.
Good.
Okay, now, if we're ready.
Mm-hmm.
Well, go on to, uh.
Okay, so, you know, now that I'm looking at this, I'm reading the, the three we just talked about.
Yeah.
We took out pursue funding and said construct bike, bike funding, I mean, we could leave it as pursue additional funding to construct, cause there are opportunities for additional funds sometimes to add to other projects, so maybe we would be better off to do that.
Okay.
And at least it sounds like we're looking for even more ways to do it.
All right, well, I'd hate it to cross out anything in red, so this is great.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that. Okay, so TR five is another one where there's been, uh, considerable change, um, but I don't think it's gonna result in losing our computations. This is the one that has to do with off-road equipment and vehicles. And let's take the smaller equipment first.
Mm-hmm.
The, the consultants referred to SOAR equipment in their draft, but it, uh, uh, they didn't provide what that actually was, uh, and they said small off-road equipment, but when you look at, uh, the Air Resources Board's SOAR applicability fact sheet, well, they regulate most small off-road engines, but not all, there are, they list various, I mean, like, I think it's, uh, the larger compressors, that sort of thing, that they, they do not regulate for one reason or another. It seems to me we wanna be consistent with the Air Resources Board, so I'm providing that indeed there will be a ban by twenty thirty of local operation of small off-road equipments, uh, SOAR, that are subject to regulation by the California Air Resources Board. This is gonna be a matter of great controversy, but I think when all the facts come out, it's, um, number one, we provide here that, that's gonna need to be funding for this decarbonization, and number two, that sufficient effective, effective incentives, oops, I've misspelled incentives, need to be provided to people, and one incentive example that I, I give is, people bring in their, their gas-powered weed eater, and with a proof of, proof of purchase of an electric one.
Right.
And they will get a, a payment back, and this sort of thing.
Hmm.
That's just a, as a, as a, provided as a, such as example.
Can you clarify it? Is the state banning the operation of them, or just the sale?
The sale, it's just, it's just a sale. It was, as of twenty twenty-four, most newly manufactured SOAR engines cannot have any GHD emissions. That doesn't mean that the stores can't sell their, their stock, but the writing is on the wall for this stuff, that, that, I think, they, they would be banning it. I think this is, uh.
Well, I'm not, but I'm talking about the operation. I, my concern is, if we ban local operation, that means we're making outlaws of the people who continue to use our old equipment, and that, that seems like a no-go.
Well.
I was thinking we were talking only about banning sale.
Sale, no.
And just trying to.
This, this, I mean, this is one of the sticking points with the, with the consultants. We're not gonna, we're not gonna get there by banning sales, because people are gonna keep these things running as long as they can.
Right.
I don't know, bio, or, the Latish experience is, we've gone battery because it's so much easier, the chainsaws, the weed eaters, you pull the trigger and it's.
I agree, but I, I still think if we could soften the wording by instead of saying banning it, do that monitoring thing that we talked about, I'm just trying to do it.
That's what I, that's what I tried to do last time.
Yeah, I know.
Tried to do, uh, a way around, the way it was originally written by the consultants, it sounded like they were banning, uh, by twenty thirty, all off-road equipment and vehicles. They made clear in their responses to me, um, that, that, that were distributed to the commission, that, uh, the larger off-road equipment and vehicles were not being banned immediately or by twenty thirty, you have this phased ordinance by the end of twenty twenty-four to reduce in stages to zero, which ends up being banned, a local operation. Uh, but that does not have, the, the zero stage doesn't have to come in by twenty thirty, and the exception to that is, uh, as provided by the consultants at the end of that paragraph, for those off-road diesel vehicles and diesel equipment types that cannot be decarbonized, in the short term, include a requirement for the use of renewable diesel, which eases that requirement considerably, but the SOAR, um, I'm afraid we don't, unless the consultants are ruling to give us a bunch of, uh, of reduction, uh, metric tons through, uh, sequestration or some other provision, I don't think we get past that.
I wonder if we could ban the commercial operation and leave private people to use their old equipment if they want.
Uh, was, where do you draw that line? You have to be licensed, taken.
Well, if you're using it to make money, that, that would be the, that's commercial.
So, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a faller or logger in the middle of the forest carrying four batteries to fall trees?
That we're only talking about this, that's not the same equipment.
No, this is small, twenty-five horsepower.
We're only talking about the tiny, small stuff.
Well, but a, but a, you know, a chainsaw is probably not, it's, you know, a, a commercial chainsaw's gonna fall under this. I'm not sure where, where that line is. So, why do we need to be more restrictive? Because our consultants say we have to be more restrictive?
It doesn't count if it's not more restrictive than what the state is already requiring.
They, they do this, these calculations as far as the metric tons that will, of, of greenhouse gas, that will, the reduction that will result from these. Their figures, when they said, oh, well, you're gonna, you know, you adopt what we gave you, we, you've met your goal, but if you go to their figures, it's like two hundred and forty-two or something metric tons that we have a cushioning, and I, 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 my sympathies are with what you're saying.
Are we gonna have SOAR from these out there? Five seventy-five percent or something, and leave at least some cushion for people who are not going to.
I mean, I, I could see it at time of replacement, but, you know, I, I just, I can't imagine everybody's gonna give up whatever they currently have unless they're incentivized, incentivized to do so. Well, that's, but that's.
But even with incentives, there's people that are not going to do it, so.
No, that's right, that's right.
So, if we reduced it by a, by a pretty good amount.
Who, who makes the decision, who gets it and who doesn't?
I don't think that's it, you're just saying that overall the county is reducing the, the number of, but we're, we can't count them anyway, we do not count the number of chainsaws owned by private citizens, so.
But this, and this is only conditioned on getting the funding to provide effective incentives.
But I think.
If we don't, if we don't get, if we don't, if we can't fund it, or we can't provide the effective incentives, this ban.
It's the word ban.
Oh, I know, that's what I got around it by reducing in stages to zero.
Well, it's here, there will be a ban on local operation, that's the one that gets to me. I feel like if we could say, I, I, cause I agree with all the other things, and I agree that it's where we're headed anyway, and that there will be less resistance in the future as more alternatives are available, but I think if we could say, we'll reduce by, and make it a significant amount, cause it's by twenty thirty, right? Reduce by twenty thirty, the local operation by, I, I don't know what number it is, so that even if they reduce our number, they're not, we're keeping most of it.
Hmm, yeah, but if it's, this, this one, the whole, uh, twenty thirty reduction is seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven metric tons CO2 ago.
We're looking only at this one, right? This number right here, and twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven. But do we wanna put our name into something that we can't really enforce? I mean, it, it bothers me to say, yeah, I, I believe we need to do all this, but to use language, strong language like ban and things like that, I mean, I, you know, the, we understand, what is the intent?
Sounds like there's a police state out there running around.
I wanna call on Michelle, cause she just started her chainsaw.
She's swearing. Couldn't say, I mean, just language-wise, I mean, with, could just, could I just say, local operation of small off-road engines that are subject to regulation by CARB will be phased out, instead of, there will be a ban, just.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, so, uh, let's see. In phased out or reduced to zero or whatever, instead of using the word ban?
Exactly, and instead of being a passive sentence, just say, start with local operation, and then at the end, will be phased out by twenty thirty.
Okay, let's see, just a second.
Yeah, so it'll get all of those up to.
But still, keep the incentives in there, right?
Right, yeah, you keep everything you take out, there will be a ban by twenty thirty, instead say, local operation of small off-road engines that are subject to regulation will be phased out by twenty thirty.
By twenty thirty. Okay.
And it matches the top, it says create a phased ordinance, so.
Good.
Right, it says create a phased ordinance, so it just says phased out, it, it kind of continues what we started.
But we're not, we're not gonna chase down people.
We're, we're, we have also, I mean, all the stuff that I did about the incentives and stuff will still be in there.
Everything else is phased, they're only changing that one little section.
There will be a ban by, yeah.
I just think, oh.
That's funny, no, I know.
When they read it, it's just.
It's a red flag.
Yeah.
Yep.
Other than that, um.
Okay, um, then we changed some of this language down in paragraphs three, four, and maybe it's all three and four, um, it was only giving benefits to fleet, uh, owners and how, without defining what a fleet is, and so we're expanding benefits to operators. And that's to most of the benefits.
Okay.
And the footnote down at the bottom is not only the definition of SOAR, but, uh, points out, the second paragraph points out that as of twenty twenty-four, most newly manufactured SOAR engines cannot have any G, GHD emissions. I think it's important to have something like that in there so people see where the state is headed. It doesn't particularly.
Tim did so much research on this, I mean.
Okay. So, on TR five, or six, now?
Yeah, not much in any of that.
Not much there. Six, yes. TR seven is untouched, TR eight?
TR seven, we did a minor tweak about the, instead of pre-clearing parcels, that.
Are you looking here on TR eight?
TR seven.
Seven, no, it, it's very easy in here because you see the heading TR seven not quantified.
Right.
But really, you're.
Oh, it's TR eight, you're right.
Yeah, that's now, okay.
Yeah, I do it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyhow, this, Michelle came up with great language to clarify what we're talking about here, so, identify or create zoning designations and definitions, allow biofuel generation facilities.
Yes.
Identify specific properties throughout the county for development of biofuel gen, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of minor.
TR nine, as good as the way it is. TR ten.
Yeah.
The, the first sentence there, the, the consultants were relying upon the charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant program. When I've looked, when I Googled that, and I did that yesterday, the applications period is already closed, so, um, I, that, I've put that kind of an example, um, then. So, it voids the rest of this then? I mean, so with such funding, develop zero emissions. We're pursuing federal funding from federal programs. Well, okay, we can say, and then take federal programs, okay, and not identify a program.
We're saying similar to, cause.
Oh, similar to, okay.
We may have another.
Oh, such as, I'm sorry, okay.
It may have multiple rounds.
Okay.
Why didn't you take the G out of funding? Probably not on purpose.
Kind of a country service. It's like I said, you were a white woman.
Yeah.
It's a good job, thanks, dude. Okay, and then, this is a question really for the planning department. We've taken out both one and two provisions for communities with a low ratio of private parking spaces to households or a high ratio of multi-unit dwellings to single-family homes. We just questioned within the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of Calaveras County if there are such communities.
You had West Point in areas such as that?
There, there actually are communities that fit this definition and it's become an issue with grant funding for certain parks projects.
So we'll put those, put those back in?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
There are disadvantage and there are moderate income, but the thing with the low ratio of public parking spaces, that's specific language?
I don't, that has not come up in any of the grant applications, but we definitely have. I think the majority of the communities in Calaveras can't count as disadvantaged.
Right, we were only talking about the low ratio of private parking spaces to households or a high ratio of multi-unit dwellings to single-family homes.
That's.
So we're trying to get rid of that because that seemed oddly specific.
Then that sounded like San Leandro.
So are we taking the parenthetical part out about we question whether communities exist?
No, no, only, only the strikeout section is the only, that's what the comment is referring to, not the other stuff which is, we do have.
That's our communities. It sounded like a cookie cutter thing to me that applies to Alameda County or.
Yeah, it seems strange. Like, we don't have low ratios of private parking spaces because everybody drives here. And then we don't have any community that is a high ratio of multi-unit dwellings.
So that's, that's.
We're lucky to have any multi-unit dwellings.
We, we don't.
So, so we keep in those crossouts?
So we can keep in, uh, the one in number two, restate, uh, the strikeout in number two, keep the strikeout in number four.
Strikeout in number four? Oh, really? Okay. All right, keep it? I mean, another, reinstate that number four?
Number two, but for number four.
One and two we'll take out. Put in number four.
Why don't you, we keep?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, delete, yeah.
Well, we keep, we're.
No, no, wait a minute.
The strikeout or we reinstate?
We reinstate the strikeout in two, we, uh, we keep the strikeout in four.
Now, I'm a little late.
I'm really lost too.
Okay, here we, we've got three places with strikeouts.
Okay.
Do we want to eliminate any of those strikeouts?
I think we keep all the strikeouts because it doesn't preclude us from using the money if we were to have a community that had that, but we don't have communities that have it that meet that definition, so will we have in the future? Maybe, I guess, but.
Yeah, this, this speaks directly to the county's housing element and I don't remember specifically if we have identified communities that, that fit. But I can tell you that we don't have neighborhoods that have a high ratio of multi-unit dwellings to single-family homes.
Or a low ratio of private parking spaces. It just seemed like it, it's not adding anything here.
Right.
And it, it makes it look very much as if we're just following some sort of.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Cause it's not unique to our county.
Yeah.
Right, that, that's.
All right, we'll, we'll keep the strikeout.
So we're keeping the strikeout, okay.
I think it's really referring primarily to that, like transit-related development where you allow people to not have parking spaces.
In our, in our note, I will say we question whether, uh, communities exist within the unincorporated areas of Calaveras County.
Yeah.
Take the note out because I think that's just confusing people.
Okay, so we're gonna strike it out.
Cause we, we've responded to the note.
Keep strikeouts. Eliminate note. It was really, the note was really for.
Yeah.
To remember why we were talking about it.
Okay. Okay. Not through TR ten.
Oh, yeah.
Who did it, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, on AG one.
AG one.
The paragraph down at the bottom. Well, first we'll get there. I mean, we've gotta pursue funding somehow we missed before. Uh, paragraph eight is just, uh, explanation as to who we would coordinate with, that was in my suggestions before. Paragraph nine is a paragraph that I found in the Butte County sequestration. Part of their, uh, plan and their, their sequestration plan had two elements. One was soil health and one was actual open lands, natural and working lands sequestration that we think of as usual sequestration. So since this AG one deals with soil health and is, uh, has calculations to support it, I moved what I found in Butte County having to do with soil health to this, uh, our measure AG one.
Okay.
And we hope that could create some additional, uh, reduction for twenty thirty.
Okay.
Down below.
So we'll, we'll see. Um, right now it's, um, twenty-four eighty-three by twenty thirty and fifty-four forty-four by twenty forty-five, so we may pick up.
We may pick up a few tons.
Reduction.
And, uh, that would be good.
If it doesn't, we figure the sequestration stuff, even if they still say they can't do anything with it, that we have placeholders in here, we can all come back as more information becomes available.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that in a bit, but, uh, okay, livestock manure management strategies, AG two, we've got another pursue funding too. And.
We don't know what that will be, given our practices here, but.
No. Oh, another thing we are suggesting, uh, in, both in the opening comments and, and in the transportation element, that there should be some overall provision for a grant force, staff force, that could be at the very beginning. We haven't drafted that, but we're suggesting that would be a good thing.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh. All right, so we're into AG three. And there, uh, I think you were writing down changes that we were suggesting actually to paragraph number one. And so that's, but that's where we now have the investigate and promulgate language.
Right.
Um.
Oh, okay.
So that the, the, the topic sentence is reduce methane emissions from livestock and tarat fermentation twenty percent by twenty thirty. And then paragraph one is investigate and promulgate grassland management strategies.
Very good, very good.
Et cetera, et cetera, appropriate to Calaveras grazing operations and conditions.
Okay.
Okay.
And somewhere we took out our inventory, whether, just, I saw, we talked about, um, feedlots and dairies.
We changed it to just have an ordinance for them.
Right, right, okay.
Create measures.
Create measures, right.
Um.
There it is right there.
Yeah.
I saw.
Should, should we ever get?
Should we ever have one?
Yeah, and, right. And if we took out the word new that you put in, because if we ever come across all these feedlots and dairy farms that the consultants have attributed to Calaveras County, we'll have an ordinance to deal with it.
Okay.
Um. SW one, I'm sorry, I need to surfin' the chair.
It's okay, I was gonna say we're, you know.
Yeah.
We have some.
SW one, we've just added hosted by individuals and organizations to, to, uh, clarify what was meant by community. It was a question I had raised and the consultant said, well, we're talking about, here we're talking about individuals and organizations.
Right.
Put that in there. Do you wanna do SW three?
Sure. That, so SW three, all we did was, um, talk, be, because they already do some methane capture at the landfill, that we, we just tried to modify this language a little bit to say that we'll, so we'll increase the methane capture.
Okay.
So that we can keep the, our very minor amount of sixty-nine metric tons by twenty forty-five.
You know, it's a fourth of our cushion.
One percent, yeah, so. And so saying pursue funding too, we just figured we, we, we wanna acknowledge that they're already doing it and we're increasing the amount.
And measure W one, um, for some reason, back in November of twenty twenty-two, we asked that they put in PF two G, the implementation measure from the general plan. They didn't and apparently because they thought it applied to Angel's Camp, which makes no sense because our general plan doesn't cover Angel's Camp. Um, and so we are putting it in again, uh, in this, uh, in this provision and we're doing it in a way that the other two implementation measures are in a series of three, three elements of the same.
Correct.
Yeah, nothing exciting there.
Just by God, we're gonna get this in there.
Yeah, it's, and so on W two, it's where they talked about creating a reach code for low-flow water use fixtures, but that, the code already requires low-flow fixtures and.
It does.
That it would be difficult to use anything lower than what you can commercially buy. So while that may change in the future, I looked up what other places reach codes were and what the state recommends for reach codes related to water use and plumbing. And so I just rewrote a section here that talks about other ways to save water. So, and instead of saying exactly what it would be, you can see the wording is research, identify, quantify measures to be included in a new ordinance to be adopted that would reduce potable water usage and then gave examples and I took those right out of the state's reach code guidelines.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so the one thing I didn't include in here was dual wastewater plumbing and we probably should use, add that in. Um, so, which is basically gray water systems. So I would put it before additional landscape irrigation controls.
Okay.
And because it's really an alternate method, but.
And then what's the language?
I, I put gray water systems.
After.
Um, on the second from the bottom line, after and materials, comma, gray water systems, comma, additional landscape irrigation controls.
And then you notice that Michelle covered herself by saying and low-flow plumbing.
Yeah.
Fixtures if commercially and readily available at the time of the drafting unit. Just being realistic.
Yeah. I mean, because the whole, the whole idea behind reach codes is to exceed whatever code that currently exists, so, and I don't know anything better than low flow. Low flow, that's a, I just believe you're trying.
Yeah. It has to drip in order.
There are some zero-flow urinals out there that have kind of mixed, um.
Zero flow?
Yeah, they don't use any water. They're very. I don't have it in me to mandate that.
Maybe for camping, yeah, yeah.
So the, uh, CS one is, is another major, uh, lots of major additions to CS one. When we questioned the consultants about the CS one, it was, they said, oh, well, with these, with the provisions that are in CS one as of then, we would have to have a, uh, a very specific study of, uh, Calaveras County that would take months to, to achieve before they could do any, any calculations of the, the reductions that would be attributable to this. So what I've done, and their, their, their proposed number one, um, was, uh, was the feasibility study that would take until twenty thirty. And so I've moved that paragraph to the end and redrafted it to really just provide that as of twenty twenty, do a study to see if there's anything new out there that we can do for sequestration.
Okay.
Um, so, um, and one thing that I've done in many of these is to make it specific that we're dealing with the unincorporated areas of the county. As they, they talk about Calaveras County, reducing Calaveras County and, uh, uh, explore opportunities within Calaveras County. And, uh, you know, since they are also the consultants for Angel's Camp, I should think they'd have it well in mind.
Yeah.
But back to CS one, we're really talking about natural and working land. So we're talking about forests, we're talking about grazing land, uh, we're talking about, uh, vineyards, uh, and, um, Butte County looked at all the various federal documents that are proposing a sequestration, uh, measures or, or steps and basically referred to all of that, uh, of those, those studies. Yesterday, Michelle and I were involved in a Zoom conversation with people at their resources board that don't deal directly with natural and working lands, but deal with local problems. There we were, a local problem. And we discussed these various, uh, state measures. I was hoping that there would be what the state is doing to try and meet its twenty thirty goal and, and if they had a bunch of, uh, calculations there, that we could then apportion that to Calaveras County. Apparently that, holy grail doesn't exist.
They aren't quite there yet. They're working on methodologies.
Yeah, so what we have is, well, number one, I have added a paragraph two and this is just what Michelle and I came up with. Reduce by twenty percent the rate of conversion into developed properties of undeveloped land and land used for agricultural purposes.
How you quantify that? I don't know because we, we figured that with the reduction in population projections for us, we're automatically reducing the amount. projections for us, we're automatically reducing the amount of development.
But it does, it it at least has a figure in it. But we, I I was able to get an email from the consultant for Butte County. And he described how they calculated the reductions and then they they did have significant reductions of greenhouse gases due to sequestration. As I said earlier, that they divided it between soil, healthy soils and the sort of sequestration we're talking about here. And it anyhow, they they did have a calculation of the reductions. And so I'm hoping.
So I I'm I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So we look at the total acreage now that's undeveloped or for agriculture and then we can we put a twenty percent on that. So Michelle, how does that impact?
Well, it's a bait up thing because it's it's we're reducing the amount that in the future was going to get developed.
Right.
So that less will get developed. But everything we've done with our general plan already did that.
Oh, it has.
And so.
I don't think we want to say that.
No, we don't want to say that. But 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 we've put in place policies and are continuing to put in place policies with the update to our zoning ordinance. That's net effect will reduce the amount of acreage that gets converted to development. And that's our our proposition.
Yeah. And also and also bear in mind that we do have the Williams Act in county, which most of these agricultural hundred acre parcels, there are most of those are over a hundred acres are covered under the Williams Act. And there are restrictions on converted conversion of those properties into anything other than agricultural.
And people who have put their lands into conservation.
Trust, yeah. Conservation trust.
Yeah.
And I've
Sure.
I I have not checked the technical background report for the general plan in this respect, but I did have my copy of the conservation and open space element of the general plan. And it's its introduction says, non-native grasslands cover nearly one quarter of the county, providing forage for livestock and making up most of the agricultural land. Talks about foothill oak woodlands. And chaparral and mountain hardwood forests comprise the rest of the native vegetation. Less now, this is our twenty nineteen general plan, less than two percent of the county's natural vegetative communities have been altered by human disturbance, converted to urban use, or converted and maintained as orchards, vineyards, field crops, or other natural vegetation. Which leads me to believe that if we go to the technical report, we're gonna get a breakdown of these various types of properties. And that's exactly as I understand it, what the consultants used in Butte County to come up with their calculations. So I'm I'm hoping we can get increase our cushion of of how much we are satisfying the the forty percent goal.
The thought being that if they took anything away from us in the other sections because of the way we softened language, that we could get at least that back here, even if this is really worth more than that. But they're not willing to go out on a limb. At least we could get that back.
Okay. Do you want a moment to read through this?
No, no, I'm I'm good. I have kind of been reading as we've been talking.
That's fair. Okay.
Now, we know someone else did this and adopted it. So we know that it's a.
Yeah, and I I went through it and I mean, they had taken out mountain meadows because Butte County doesn't have any, and I put them back in. And now it's still right. And then on the next page is stuff that was in the the conservation provision that the the consultants came up with. And at the bottom on the beautifully colored paragraph.
Yes.
Those are the things that we've moved to the designated other places.
Great.
Okay, and the next page on page thirty five. This paragraph fourteen is something that the planning commission has requested before and has been approved before. And somehow it got lost in the shuffle, so I'm suggesting that get in there. And that was something that was suggested by the public. Then the last provision, which takes up you know, most of the page. All is just a quotation from the general plan implementation measure, C O S dash four D about oak woodlands ordinance.
Right.
And that then we have the paragraph fourteen, that is the redrafted consultant's paragraph one.
Yeah.
So exactly how we get the consultants to do some computations there.
I guess we want to put a big circle around the not quantified and say, can we quantify it?
Well, I have it in our notes that we ask that as we quantify. So, okay. So C S two. I think is oh, I just reworded the paragraph one a bit to make it clear what we're doing. But then we need to have funding to support requiring county agencies to procure and like. And the the figure at the top, I had raised the question, well, it looks like you're you're gonna get eight hundred and sixty three metric tons of reduction of greenhouse gases by applying eight hundred and sixty three tons of compost.
Right.
And they in their response said, whoops, that was a typo. And that's where they came up with this three thousand seven hundred and fifty four. And there we are.
Wow.
So as Cronkite would say, that's the
Yes, he, yeah.
Now, that's do you have any?
No, I I just, no, I just have to laugh that if we cut oak trees down, just like everything else, you can go buy oak tree someplace else and mitigate the loss. And I think well, that's what it's a it's a no banks are the banks are interesting, you know, like wetland banks, if you convert wetlands, there's a place where you can purchase.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
And it has nothing to do with this. That system was a
Yeah.
Well, we do have an oak tree ordinance that's actually coming up that actually addresses that issue. So.
I thought I thought we did too, and but there's already language about an oak tree ordinance, but something that we haven't discussed in detail.
There is, because this came up under some project where a developer was trying to use the same land bank over and over again for projects without actually planting more trees. So that that was like, oh, wait a minute, we can't just use those same twelve blue oaks.
Right.
Definitely.
Now, the question is, we want, I I'd be glad to do this. Do we want to provide a clean copy with all our changes reflected in it to the board of supervisors? Or do we want to?
Yes. No, we want to provide the red lines to the consultant. Yes, red lines for the consultant.
I think, well, how about if I make the changes that we discussed today?
Okay, send it to me.
And send it to you.
Yeah, send it to your consults.
And but leave in our the comments.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
For the for the consultants.
Yeah, track changes, still track.
Okay, but maybe that's that's what we do. Step one, and then see what happens there.
Right.
And then step two would be
Would be whatever we get from them, we make it into a clean copy. That's for the joint session.
Okay.
And then we would be there, there, oh, Tim would be there to address any questions.
And Michelle.
Michelle.
Okay.
It's been going on so long, when I look at the pile of papers I have regarding this, I it's incredible. And random notes that I've put in my computer about things.
Okay, so I understand. I'm gonna make the few changes that we've made today. Reflect on that. And and then send it to you and you and I should have a telephone conversation about the colors.
Yes.
And let's see, Julie, I guess I can't send that to the other two commissioners.
No.
It's not.
No, don't send it to the other two commissioners. You can send it to one.
Okay.
And then for the board, the board's gonna have to wait until the agenda is published to get comments from the planning commission.
Which it seems to me that for the board purposes, probably the best thing would be the to have a clean copy of the of the what we've come up with.
Right.
Yeah, the board can watch these meetings and look at the documents.
Should they have that level of interest in us?
But then we can we can provide written comments to the board at the time of, I mean, the the individual commissioners could apply written.
I at the you and I could talk about how to get some additional comments or to the board, and it might be that the best way to do it is to put it in the agenda for them as attachments.
Attachments. Ah, uh huh. Okay.
So would we put deciding which comments need to go to them as an item on our agenda for next time? Because I think that they should be from the entire planning commission, not from any individual commissioner.
And where are they in this whole process? I mean, would this is this gonna be brand new to them? Have there have has have there been phased discussions regarding this plan or?
They are they are aware of where we are as far as the process is concerned. They may not be aware of the specific details such as the numbers of metric tonne reduction, but they have bought into meeting S B thirty two goals, which is that the reduction by forty percent of nineteen nineteen numbers by twenty thirty five. So specifics.
With individual chainsaws, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So they have a conceptual understanding because they provided the direction.
Right.
Accepted the general plan and provided the direction to us of what we were supposed to achieve here. It's dragged on certainly much longer than anyone ever imagined. So they're aware of the status as it went along.
So does that mean by the next meeting, I'm hearing that there's a desire to have a a study session on what how to finalize comments to accompany the board agenda? You gonna have some suggestions for the twenty eighth then for how we're gonna provide that? I mean, okay.
Yeah, I think so.
And do you know, is the technical background report for the general plan, is it available online?
I I think it is. If it's not, we can make it available online, but I I'll look into that. I'm not sure specifically.
Yeah, I think I had one once and I think I must have jumped it.
Oh, no.
Yes. I'll call Kelly. Because I think at this point, if it has helpful statistics in it, I would add to the comments at the beginning of the sequestration thing where we ask the in the comments, we say the Calaveras County Planning Commission requests that its consultants make a similar quantification to as done in Butte County. I'd like to add to that note that what what's available in the in the technical background report.
Okay.
That's because I I think I think I think we have the same sort of statistics in acreages and such that Butte County had to work with.
So so the process will be, we'll do a joint study session. And then at a further time, they will they will agendize that and they'll do a public hearing, Julie. How will that?
So they have to, once they have a draft, they'll have to turn it into a full on draft plan. They have to do CECLA for that, and that'll be adopted by public hearing going to the planning commission and then board. I think public hearing, I guess I should, it'll certainly be a public meeting, but I I thought it might, I'm not sure on the public hearing requirement. It probably, I'm gonna guess it probably will be, but I could be wrong. Certainly a CECLA, a formal CECLA process.
Gabriel, maybe it would make life my life a lot easier if I could borrow the technical background report.
Sure. If we have a hard copy, you want to take with you.
Follow follow you over there.
Yeah.
Great. That'd be great. Okay.
I think the goal here is to have the greenhouse gas reduction plan adopted before the end of the year. Is that correct?
No, no, if I'm not sure if the final adoption by the, I don't know how long the consultants need to come back with the files. I don't have an answer for that piece. Certainly the measures will be adopted, should be adopted by the end of the year in terms of the final direction from.
Because we're hoping to see what a plan actually looks like. We still have never seen.
Yeah. I mean, we I assume that eventually we get a document with a color picture on the front and in the and the executive summary and definitions and
Be almost like Butte County's plan then, some of those plans that have been shared.
Yeah, some of those plans have been shared.
Like that.
Yeah, it's gonna look.
These are just the measures.
Right.
The beef.
The beef.
Okay.
I mean, do if I'm not, if they're doing a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration, that could take a few months. So I I just don't want to speak for them. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. And who's doing the CECLA analysis?
We we don't know yet. And and that's something that C C O G is keeping on the rocks because of relationships.
Right, that might be shifting.
Yeah.
Yes, I got it. Okay. Well. So I think we we are done with that item right now. Commissioner reports?
Well, I would just like to say that recognize Commissioner C J's thing for his award that he received, the national award of forty under forty. That's highly commendable. And we're proud of him.
Yeah, and and I do believe that he is very overscheduled at the moment, just from my conversations with him.
Oh, I think so too.
It would it would be, we'd hate to lose him, but
Commissioner Lattich, can you, I'm not aware of the award. Can you just educate us a little bit?
This is last week's enterprise. It's about half a page devoted to, this is a award given by philanthropic organizations, people that are out seeking philanthropic funds. And they have an annual set of awards that forty people under forty years of age and for special achievements. And our colleague was one of those.
Oh, wow, that's good.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank the two of you for all the work that you've done in this greenhouse gas. I mean, it's made it a lot easier for me to get caught up to speed and and understand. And I clearly like these measures more than the package. I mean, this is kind of the like, as we said, the meat of that.
Yeah, it seems like we've gotten down to a
Yes.
Something we can digest.
Yeah, manageable.
Whether we like it entirely or not, I mean, I I think we are at a place where we feel like we've done the best we could do. we've done the best we could do.
So if CJ, just a matter of, so the super supervisor or stopper will have to appoint that or consult with someone, someone then will have to apply. So we could be without a commissioner for a number of months then, correct?
Sometimes it's been that way.
Yeah. So it could be four, like today, only three of us.
And with my conversation with Commissioner Parker yesterday, I'm not so sure if his health issues would keep him out for several meetings or not, but I strongly advised him to see a doctor when he described his symptoms.
No, dear.
Yeah.
So.
So we don't know.
Maybe we should point out that Commissioner Singh has not yet resigned.
No, he has not yet, right.
And it sounds like he might be willing to try to hang in there until someone new can.
Possibly, yeah.
Take his place, so it, who knows? Yeah, which is.
Tough to juggle.
Yeah, we hope Commissioner Parker's feeling better quickly and returns to us. So, planning director report?
Madam Chair, I just, I wasn't aware that some of you have received complaints about the land use department being closed for half the day. I just want to explore the validity of those complaints. I mean, is it really concerning? Because we have weekly staff meetings in the morning, and then the building department is actually closed in the afternoon. So if the building department is closed in the afternoon, and if we're open in the afternoon, we're not really accomplishing very much. So we use that period of time when the building department is closed to do some catching up on things that we haven't done because we are running on empty from 7:30 to 4:30. So if this is a community concern, this is something that we can sit down together with Doug and figure out what we can do to make people feel better about the services that we provide.
I haven't heard a lot. I've heard a few, but I, you know, I don't know how much people are, there's an assumption being made as opposed to, I'm sure the hours are being posted. People just don't take an opportunity to know, and then they drive all the way to San Andreas and all, you know, it's closed, and it's like.
Yeah, and a couple of times we actually see people, you know, come at those times, I have openly countered, and I've helped them. So we're not trying to not do business. It's just that, you know, sometimes we need some time to catch up. And that's basically what we're trying to do.
How are you doing on staffing?
Not very well.
Yeah, I think that's just the continuing problem. And it's been going on for a while, the partial day closures. And, you know, I still can't remember and have to look. I have to remind myself every time if I'm coming down like, oh, what's the day that they're closed part of the day? So I think it really is, it's just that assumption that county is open. It's, we should all be adjusted to it by now, but a lot of people just don't even think about it, that it's a possibility.
And then how is that word, is it just on your website? Is it, has it gone through any publication?
It's on the website.
It's in the message on the phone.
It's, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so those are.
Okay, so there are.
We have no excuse.
But again, it's just the assumption that we're open and people just show up. And when they do, and when I'm around, I make sure that we accommodate them so that we don't waste their trip.
I can understand if there's somebody being, if you're constantly being interrupted at the counter, it's hard to get any work done.
And it's not because of any kind of modified work schedule. It's just, everybody's there, same day. We're just, we're just sometimes swamped. And we need to, you know, we need to assign projects. We need to catch up on things that we're doing in the department. But if it continues to be a problem, then it's something that we need to address.
Yeah, I don't think it's a huge problem. And I think most people that regularly deal with the departments.
They, exactly.
Yeah, and probably mostly see the same people over and over and over again, so.
And, you know, I appreciate the amount of time your staff must take to prepare these reports.
Yeah.
And they're very thorough and.
Yeah, I mean, the reports they're noticing, the packaging, the mailing, all the things that we have to do on a constant basis. Yeah, it takes a lot of manpower.
And the zoning ordinance update is going to be a big.
Yeah.
Big resource sucker, sucker wrapper.
Yeah, yeah. So besides that, I don't have any other comments. We didn't approve any AUPs from the last planning commission up to now. So, but we might be approving a couple of them that you might be hearing about, depending on which way they go.
Okay. Well, on that happy note, we're adjourned at 12:20. I did not expect that.
Yeah.
Good job.